meeting for February 25th. And if you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God, we ask your blessings on those who have been called to lead this community in which we live, play, and work. Guide us peacefully through debate. Remind us that we are not only leaders, but also servants, and that it is our responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right, good, and true. May we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and respectfully when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. Amen.
All right. Could we please have a roll call, Mr. Skulik?
Yeah, Councilmember LeBlanc?
Present.
Councilmember Musgrove?
Here.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Sannella?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. And going out of order, we're going to have Sandy Fast. Please come down and introduce our newest member of station number one. Does anyone know his name? He's the cutest furriest one.
Sawyer.
Sawyer! So do you want to tell us a little bit about how this came to be? Because this is an exciting time. This is only second to, by the way, my favorite meeting where we had a miniature horse in here. So just saying, now that Sawyer gets to come and visit, it's very exciting. Sawyer, you're the star of the show. Look at him. He's like, oh, he's looking down his nose at us.
Yeah, well, so this started, I'd say, almost eight months to a year ago, of just the need of having a canine in the station to help with stress reduction and mental wellness. And so the process was a bit to find a program that would be willing to donate a pretty trained dog to that, as well as making sure that all our Ts are crossed and Is dotted in the program side for liability and logistics and everything like that. But so it's been a long road, and we're finally here. And so we're super excited. He's living at the station when I'm at work, and then when I'm home, he's with me. So he can live that normal life as a dog and have that loving family. But he's halfway through his shift. He'll be done tomorrow morning for his first shift, and he's been, it's been great. He's had a lot of interactions with a bunch of different people. And so the mood of the station is already, is already really good and positive. So looking forward to what's ahead, and he'll be, he'll definitely be around the city and come to see everybody and say hi.
Well, thank you for bringing him this evening. Councilmember LeBlanc was saying, maybe he could come home with us on a rotational balance?
Like your second grade pet?
Yeah, exactly. And I was like, well, I don't think he'd probably, I don't think that you would like what we would feed him, probably, like...
Yeah, he has a pretty strict diet to make sure so...
I was thinking so. Anyway, thank you so much for bringing him.
Uh, he's about 20 months.
Oh, okay, so still a puppy, really?
He's still a puppy, yeah, but he's very well behaved, and he's enjoying it. So it's awesome.
Well, I hope everyone gets to meet him in the audience. He sure is a sweet dog.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, well, we don't get to do fun stuff like that very often, so we definitely get to do that. That's great. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. We do have a speaker on, item number five. Do we have any other items that any council members wish to poll?
I'd love to approve the balance, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any notes? Seeing none. Item number five, we have one speaker, Chris Freeman. Come on down. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. On item number five, I hope you're all as excited as I am about the updated drainage master plan here at the city. But in all seriousness, we talked frequently during the Measure X campaign about the need for updating the cities to repair and reconstruct the aging storm drain system. I know the master plan is just the very first step in what will become the replacement plan. What I'm here today to ask is that we look for efficiencies once we start to replace the system. If there's opportunities to align the lack of sidewalks in some of our areas, or the safe routes to school program, that we talk a lot about digging up the road one time. So if we're going to block lanes of traffic and dig up the road, if we can create efficiencies with sidewalk enhancements to add sidewalks to some residential areas, that would be great. Another thing is overhead power lines. Now, while these are owned by SDG&E, they are within our jurisdiction, so it's in the city's interest to underground these or work with SDG&E to hopefully share some cost in undergrounding these as often as possible. A lot of the overhead power lines throughout the city are in residential areas that are probably not going to be redeveloped anytime soon. So the only opportunity to maybe do a cost share might be when we're digging up the roads to do these storm drains. So I'm not an engineer. I don't know if this is possible. I'm an accountant. I would just like to ask that we look for opportunities for savings and not impacting people's lives multiple times. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. I just wanted to make a comment, and that is corrugated muddle pipe. We used to talk about this all the time. Who says it can't be fun and exciting? That has to do with drains. One comment that I would also like to make is on overhead power lines, those are paid for by SDG&E. The city does not pay to underground those. And then what ends up happening is that cost is borne by the community. So it's all rate payers throughout the county. So it doesn't just SDG, and it doesn't actually pay for it. It's us that pays for it. So anytime, and it is very costly doing that. But point well taken. I always tell staff, we always need to look for OPM when it, when we're talking about, and that's other people's money, in case you weren't aware of what that is, other people's money, when we're talking about, and that's, you know, taxes that have been paid, of course, by us, but by others. But if someone's going to be getting a grant, why not it be us, when we're, you know, able to work on infrastructure and improving the quality of life for our communities? So point well taken. Thank you much for that. And yes, council member?
Thank you, Mayor. So my district encompasses a lot of these more established neighborhoods, and I do get that question frequently. So I check back with our rep with SDG&E, and the standard answer is, yes, we have no money for that. However, if your city wants to engage it, we'd be happy to provide the services for a fee. So it is extremely expensive, and the millions of dollars just to do a single neighborhood, because it's not just undergrounding it. It's terminating lines, setting vaults, digging up roadways or sidewalks, and sometimes easements onto property. And those costs will not be borne by SDG&E. So it doesn't, as you said, Chris, it's a concerted effort, not out of the realm, but it is extremely expensive. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And I move to approve. Item number five, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any notes? Seeing none. Moving on to oral communications, we have a few speakers. First up, I have to put my glasses on, Natalie Shagahi, followed by Grace Spivek, followed by Chris Freeman. Natalie? Or I'm sorry, Natasha. See, my daughter's name is Natalie, so when I see something that starts with an N, I'm just automatically thinking Natalie, so I apologize. I apologize for that. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Natasha Shigagi, and I'm a recent graduate and current volunteer at Cal State University San Marcos. I'm here today to raise awareness about the devastating impact of tobacco use, which continues to be the leading cause of preventable death in California, killing nearly 40,000 people annually. That's about 110 people every single day. The tobacco industry spends more than $8 billion each year marketing their harmful and addictive products, targeting youth and our most vulnerable populations. Many of these products contain high levels of nicotine and come in appealing flavors and bright colors, which mask their harmful effects and make them even more dangerous for young people. I've seen firsthand the effects of nicotine and what can harm, the harm it can cause on one's overall well-being and quality of life. Along with my volunteer work with the Vista Community Clinic, I am also a research assistant on the Cannabis and Tobacco Research Lab at Cal State. The study aims to characterize demand for tobacco and cannabis among young adults who actively use, and most participants are residents of San Marcos, because they come directly from Cal State University San Marcos. These people are my peers, and I have listened to them detail the reliance on the substance, the young age at which they started using the substance, as well as their attempts to quit with no avail, unable to break the harmful habit. As we work to address these concerns, I would like to invite you all to a free community forum titled "A Pizza the Action: A Conversation About Youth Vaping, Substance Use, and Mental Wellness." This event takes place on April 23rd from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. It's an opportunity to engage in an open discussion about the challenges our youth are facing. Attendees are also welcome to enjoy pizza, play games, and have the chance to speak openly on these important topics. I encourage everyone to join us for this fun, engaging, informative event as we work together to create a healthier future for our community. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Natasha. If you could please get the city clerks, oh, do you have, do you have?
I do have fire.
Perfect. All right, they can scan it, and they can send out a calendar invite for us, so we can have that in our calendars. Thank you very much for that. Okay, next up is Grace, and then after Grace, it will be Chris Freeman again.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. For the record, my name is Grace Spivek, and I'm here on behalf of Universidad Popular to provide our on-the-record updates. As many of you know, our organization works daily to support San Marcos residents. First up, Universidad Popular representatives attended the city's goal-setting workshop on February 11th at 3:00 p.m. We appreciated the opportunity extended to us to listen in to these discussions, and we are aligned with several key priorities. Firstly, supporting fire safety and community response teams. Second, advocating for accessible and affordable housing solutions, rental assistance, and accessible referrals. Third, emergency planning and disaster preparedness. Fourth, promoting community engagement through arts and culture. Fifth, the NCTD+ expansion, supporting citywide accessibility for transit services. Sixth, the cannabis revenue generation, exploring ways to reinvest revenue into community services. Seventh, aquatic improvements and expansions. We look forward to continuing our collaboration with the city to advance these priorities for the well-being of our San Marcos residents. On January 30th, we had our representative, Vanessa Cifuentes, join the point-in-time count. She volunteered for the 4:00 a.m. to the 8:00 a.m. shift. Her feedback was really important. She suggested that future counts should span across more days and occur at different times to make the count more effective. She noticed that the unhoused tend to be in locations that make them hard to locate at that time in the morning. And she also recommended involving more individuals who frequently interact with and are familiar with the unhoused population to help ensure a more accurate count. April 11th, 2025, has been identified as the day of service in honor of Cesar Chavez. We will partner with North County Sister Colleges and High Schools for a community cleanup in his honor. We look forward to working with students and community members to celebrate his legacy of service and social justice. Our San Marcos Citizenship Classes are ongoing, ones actively happening right now, held at San Marcos Elementary School every Tuesday from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. We're always seeking volunteer tutors to help students practice for the exam in English. Your support can make a meaningful difference in their journey to citizenship. We're deeply grateful for our partnerships with the San Marcos Unified School District and San Marcos Elementary Administration, whose collaboration makes our mission of empowering the community through civic engagement possible. Every new citizen in our region represents a new voter in our community, strengthening our democracy. Dignity, generosity, and equity are core tenants of Universidad Popular. We acknowledge that many community members are suffering from food insecurity. Our team offers a food pantry available every weekday for the individuals and families of San Marcos. We express our gratitude to those who donate, including the San Marcos Community Action Group, Mayor Rebecca Jones, Sharon Jenkins, and the City of San Marcos. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Chris Freeman. Welcome back.
Hi again, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. I wanted to take a minute to publicly say thank you to staff. I'm sure you've all seen the new street sweepers that are out there. Last year, staff did a best value analysis and brought street sweeping in-house. And I just want to say that I'm thrilled with the results. It seems like when I see them now, they're driving slow, they're very respectful of traffic. In the past, under the last contract, you'd see them flying around pretty quick, and the machines that they were using were kicking up a lot of dust. I think the city got machines that use water, so it seems like a much more sanitary solution. But really, just, I'm glad that staff was able to bring this back in-house, and I know they're going to take a lot of pride in it. One thing that I would like to say about street sweeping is that it seems like there's always been the issue of people not moving their cars on the street sweeping days. And parking enforcement should never be about profits, but it needs to be about enacting a behavior. And if there's no enforcement ever for the street sweepers, or for people that park on the streets, no one will ever move their cars. I'd like to see that dialed up from a zero to a one, just to maybe get some warnings out there, so people do move their cars. There's parts around town where cars get broken into, and there's glass in the gutters, and cars never move, so the stuff never gets swept up. I understand that might not be in the budget for this year, but as we look at next year's budget, if we can dial in just a little bit more to get some warnings out there so that people will move their cars, that's going to let staff do a better job and help them out. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right, next up is reports. Sandag, we actually met last Friday, and it was a joint meeting with transportation, borders, and regional planning. We talked mostly about the 2025 plan that is coming up for a revision. That is, most of it, actually, we were talking about funding. So one of the things that a lot of residents are unaware of is that what we're talking about is two new taxes that would be countywide, 2032 and 2036. And there will also be, MTS is planning on putting in a, also another tax that will be just regional to any MTS service area. But then there's also discussion about NCTD putting in, or putting out to vote another tax. By the way, all three of these taxes will be, because essentially, after the two regional taxes, it really adds up to one full tax countywide. Additionally, with the two, that will be three taxes total. And then also the renewal of the transnet tax, which is slated to end in 2048. Just to remind everyone out there, we did not keep those promises to the citizens. The things that we promised to everyone in the county that they voted on to tax themselves on have not been delivered. So the new plan will require not one, not two, but three full taxes, brand-new ones, that you will all get to vote on, and the extension of another tax. One of the things that just kind of comes to my mind is how would we be able to do that when there is a ceiling on taxes? And the reason that I bring this up is that there are many of us that don't realize that 2% is the most that they can actually put on us as taxpayers. So stay tuned, because I believe that the legislature, which would be the state senate, and then the assembly members within the state of California would need to raise that ceiling so that it could even be higher. So right now, at seven points, it's actually 7.25, because we have the half-cent transnet. So it would be 2% after that, that could be the maximum, and then the extension of transnet. So anyway, just stay tuned. I believe there will be more discussion about this moving forward. But as someone that doesn't believe that we have spent the tax money properly, regionally, on the transportation plan, it's a real problem for me. So anyway, just wanted to bring that up. We do meet this coming Friday, and we'll be discussing the realignment of the Delmar Bluff situation and the coaster rail line that is owned by NCTD. So anyway, that'll be this coming Friday. And moving on to the next one, which would be League of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove?
Yes, Mayor, we meet on the 10th, so we should have a report on the council meeting on the 11th.
Okay, North County Transit District.
Yes, Mayor, we met last week, and in addition to all of the potential regional taxes that you mentioned, it wasn't agendized, but it did come up in part of our discussions that North County Transit District may be looking at their own sales tax increase.
Right, which is what I, what I was kind of tea-leaving in all of that, yep.
So as, if that gains traction, I'll certainly keep the community and the council abreast on the latest on that. As you can imagine, the meeting was probably two and a half, three hours long, so I'll try to condense my report to just the things that kind of have the most impact on us. And one of them, and again, there's going to be a lot more information to come on this, and it's, it was kind of a surprise and a little bit unfortunate to learn, but it sounds like Sandag has, does not, has decided not to continue to fund NCTD+, which obviously is something that we rolled out here in San Marcos about a year ago. We're looking into alternative funding mechanisms, but that was a bit of a surprise. I know that the mayor and I, I certainly reached out right away and said, hey, you know, what's going on at Sandag on this one? And so we were a little bit, both a little bit surprised on that. But we're trying to get more information as that breaking news comes forward. And again, we are trying to work with both North County Transit District and also talking with Sandag to see if we can find a way to continue it. Because by all the, all the measurables and all, you know, from everything, all the feedback that I've heard, it sounds like it's been a huge success. So it'd be, it'd be terrible to lose that so quickly.
Yes, and just to tag on to that, so when the discussion, or when Councilmember Sannella, Deputy Mayor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Sannella had reached out to me on that, I reached out to Sandag and said, hey, don't remember voting on this, what happened? Initially, they gave me one answer, then they contacted me back and said, actually, yes, there was, there was an issue with that. And so asking about that further, there is some, there was, I believe, an agenda item that was not specific as to what exactly we were voting on, which I always take an issue to, because we don't do that here at the city. We know exactly what we're voting on, and that there wasn't the information. So we're looking at to that further to figure out how that happened, and also figuring out if, again, OPM, I talked about that earlier, other people's money, if there's other grant funds out there to continue the program, because it has been so successful, and then other ways. So I told them, whatever we need to, they need me to sign on to, to figure out how to get grant funding or anything like that, I'm definitely up to pushing forward for that. Yes.
And thank you for your support on that.
Yes, of course.
I know you're a big supporter of, of NCTD+.
I am.
I also want to just reiterate that you were not the only board member that was totally, it was not advertised, the agenda item was not advertised correctly. Even our NCTD board member, Jewel Edson, said that she didn't really connect the dots until after the meeting. And so it was clearly, yeah.
There was zero information in the agenda, yeah.
And then a couple more items.
Deputy Mayor, if I may, before you move on to your next item, with respect to the NCTD+, can, did they tell you what that timeline looks like? If I remember correctly, this is a one-year pilot that we're under? Did they mention in terms of if there's any sort of lapse in funding, what are we looking at?
Yeah, the, the original timeline will be fulfilled, and I'll know more on Friday. I have a one-on-one with the CEO of NCTD, and that'll be the, you know, top of mind when we, when we meet. And so I'll certainly have more information as far as the particulars. It was kind of breaking news, like I said, at the meeting, and caught everybody off surprise, you know, off-guard and a little bit surprised by it. But I do get the sense that there's a lot of support to keep the program going, not just in San Marcos, but to continue the, you know, the vision was to, if it was successful in San Marcos, to continue rolling it out to other cities like Vista and Fallbrook. And I had lunch yesterday with a council member and the chair of NCTD, and she is, she's a supporter as well and wants to roll it out in Carlsbad. And so there's a lot of support for it. It's just, again, it's like anything else, we got to find the funding for it.
Yeah, and Councilmember, just to add to that, I had requested from Maria Orso, who is the executive director of Sandag, the timeline, the amount of funding that's needed, and we, I feel, being that there is so much support, because again, you know, the meeting Friday was transportation, regional planning, and then also borders, and every single person in that meeting was talking about microtransit and this, and these pilot projects. And then I said to him, when I found out that indeed there was a situation, I said, how is it that we can talk about these microtransit projects? They are wildly successful, and then we're just going to do a pilot and then it ends? That doesn't make any sense. So anyway, more, stay tuned for that. But I have requested that information. So when I do receive that from Sandag, if I do receive it before Friday, I will, I will send it to Michelle, and she can send it out to the whole council, so you're all aware of what's going on. But don't worry, I'll be fighting for it and talking about it a lot.
Further confusion, or you could maybe say a positive piece of this, is that another thing I wanted to report out tonight was that we did cancel, or we're going to be canceling, two bus routes. Route 334, which serves a circle within Vista, is being canceled in part because Vista is going to be, or NCTD is going to be rolling out NCTD plus Vista. Where that funding's going to come now, we don't know yet. But, but I do believe that the staff team up there do have some sort of plan to try to get creative and find some funding for this. And they may be looking for other grants and other partnerships to do that. And the other bus line that was canceled was 444, and that served mostly like in Carlsbad, kind of goes around like Legoland to Cannon to Faraday to Point Zetia, and then back down Palomar Port Road back towards Legoland. And that was just canceled just based off of an evaluation of the ridership data, and it just wasn't, it just wasn't penciling out. And then the other thing that's probably going to have the biggest impact on, potentially on our area, and again, it's, this is only my second meeting on NCTD. I hadn't, I hadn't heard this before, but of the 12 original Sprinter trains that were purchased 15 years ago, only five of them are still functional. And the other seven are in lots, basically on stands, and they're being cannibalized for parts to keep the remaining five going. That was another shocker. And I'm just surprised that that hadn't come up before. But that's one of the top priorities for finding discretionary grant money, and it's going to take, they estimate, $284 million to replace those trains, and another $20 million to enhance the train station so that they can accommodate the new trains. And so you're looking at around $284 million, of which zero has been found so far. And so, as you can imagine, you're down to five trains. And so, as you can imagine, you're down to five trains. There is a potential, on the worst-case scenario, where we may not have the Sprinter for a time being. And so I don't think that's near-term, I don't, I don't want to scare anybody. But, you know, we, we started with twelve trains, we have five trains. And so it's, it was an interesting meeting. There's a lot of eye-opening experiences for me and things that I never heard. You know, we get, we get these, these reports every single meeting. None of this has ever come up before, so it was really surprising to me.
Over a quarter of a billion dollars that we're in need of, and, with a B. And, you know, one of, so I was on NCTD until I was elected as mayor, so I left in January of two thousand and nineteen. At that point in time, we were actually talking about, prior to my leaving, we were talking about figuring out how to fund the new, and converting the, a rail line, actually, because the rail line right now is specific to the Sprinter. The Sprinter is a one-off, so there is, there, there, no one else is using that same technology, the same trains. And so what we were talking about in that time, so it's, I'm sorry to hear that that's actually still continuing and that no action has been taken. But at that time, we were talking about converting the rail lines over so that it took the same thing as the Sprinter, I'm sorry, as the coaster, so that it's, it's uniform and you don't have those one-offs, which don't make any sense. And to hear they're being cannibalized and up on blocks is really sad to hear, so. Unfortunately, I guess, more to, more to be.
And again, as, as we go, you know, part of my role of being on NCTD is to, to try to help lead the organization in a successful way, but also to come back and report to the community what exactly is going on down there, just like you do every month with Sandag, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Moving on to North County Dispatch Joint Powers Authority.
And we meet tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
First meeting?
Yes, first meeting.
All right, great. Clean Energy Alliance, Councilmember Nunez.
We meet on Thursday.
Okay. City Council Business Visits. Did we have one? I don't think we did, did we? Oh, that's right, you guys had one.
Yesterday.
Oh, yesterday. So who went on that?
That was me and Councilmember Musgrove.
And you guys did the workout thing, right?
Yes, along with a lot of our city staff.
Yes, they did.
What do you mean, they?
Yes, they did.
What do you mean, they?
I couldn't get anybody to volunteer to take pictures, so I ran the camera.
Oh, no, we can't blame it on that. You've got to be out and active, that's our thing here in the city. Get out and active.
Seventy-five still images and, I don't know, forty or fifty megabytes worth of video, is that right?
I'm not thinking, I'm not thinking we needed that much video. I'm thinking we needed our council members to be healthy and, and get out and active.
It was our employees that were out there carrying the water on that one.
How many? How many did we have?
At least twenty.
Yeah.
Twenty, and you took pictures? You didn't even do it?
I gave him the test, she shared.
Oh, geez. Okay, all right, well, let's hear all about it. We're going to have to give you a hard time over this.
He's not really dressed to work out.
Well, no.
He had plenty of opportunities to wear the proper clothing. I will note that for the record.
I appreciate you considering my schedule, thank you.
Okay, I've changed in my car before, so just saying. I also go to the parks pretty often.
They also have a restroom for you to change in.
What are blankets for in the backseat? All right, anyway, okay, let's go.
So Movement Collective is, it's mainly a CrossFit gym. They also have a lift and move class, which is also, it's, it's basically a strength conditioning class with a little bit of cardio, and then you just don't do the Olympic lifts like you do in CrossFit. So they led us through an hour workout with weights, with assault bikes. We did a little cardio, a little strength training. It was a really great workout, a really fun time. And they were founded in August, two thousand and twenty-three, and they consider themselves a health and wellness club. So they host a lot of community events, like they did for the city of San Marcos yesterday. It was just a lot of fun. And they share a huge passion for fitness and community, so they were very welcoming to all of us. And they want it to just be more than just a gym. They want it to be a supportive environment, and they want to help people of all fitness levels on their fitness and health journeys. And I think, you know, it's, they were just really special people, really welcoming. And they offer about thirty-four classes per week. They do seven days a week. Here's some photos of some of what we did. We did a lot of assault bike. We did some medicine ball slams. We did some hollow holds.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, we did a little bit, it was a full one-hour workout. We did.
Wait, where is it located? Did you tell us?
It's over, off of.
Tiffigan Creek?
Yes. Over by Grand Plaza over there, yeah.
Wow.
Sort of by Cravery Cookies, where we visited last month. So you can always do your workout, then head for some cookies after.
Oh, yeah, that's lovely.
I was tempted.
Oh, wow, awesome.
Councilmember Musgrove, do you have anything to add? What was your favorite workout move?
I stood there and took pictures. No, I'm just kidding, I'm sorry.
A very, very good team. All of them have advanced degrees in physiology, kinesiology, or are working on their doctorates. The, Amy is extremely well-versed, and she is, on that picture on the right, she's the one in the mint-green pants. Next to her is Dylan, and I'm trying to, oh.
Ashley was the other coach there.
Is she theirs?
She's in the back row.
Far left, yeah, on the left.
Yes, far left.
So that's just three of the six employees, just a fantastic team, very well-coordinated, station to station. They set it up so that they'll break up the, the group into small, four or five people at a time, and then rotating on time intervals. And it was really impressive to see all of our, our staff out there, just everyone putting out a hundred percent.
They also offer memberships, they do class packs, and they do free community workouts for the whole community. You don't have to be a member or anything. They do that on a lot of the holidays, like Memorial Day. That's their next one, is Memorial Day. So if you want to check them out, you can go on Memorial Day for a free workout, or they always do, I think they always do the first class for free. So reach out to them, Movement Collective, try a class. It's really great, all fitness levels.
So I actually made the joke, I said, we have a lot of city employees that we may need to have a paramedic on standby. And Ashley, in the back on the left, she says, I'm a nurse. Okay, great. So they, their staff is very well-rounded, they're ready to, to handle any situation, and very clear in what they expected, but in a good way. Would you agree with that?
Yes, definitely.
I think everybody had a great time.
Great, okay. Okay, moving on to council commentary. I have something that I wanted to share with everyone. Staff doesn't really like it when we brag on them. However, not naming any names, Michelle Bender, our city manager, had a great idea, just kind of based on some of the things over the years that have been said about us, really having the San Marcos way, which is spending money wisely and making sure, you know, one of the things that she brought forward was the best value analysis, which is always making sure that we're getting the best value. And as Chris Freeman had brought up, it's one of the things that really sets us apart from other cities. And so this Thursday, I think it is, we have our new Director of Lean Government starting, which you've never probably heard of that, because guess what? It's the first of its kind here in San Marcos. And the first of its kind, as far as I know, in the county. Pretty sure, maybe even the state. So for us, the San Marcos way is always, again, you know, spending money wisely, but also how do we prove that to our community? So lean stands for Leading Efficiency Accountability and Engagement. And so it brings a lot of the things that many of us have talked about for years, finally into an employee that this will be all that they do. And that is proving up, you know, all of the things that we're doing and why we're doing them, and making sure that we're, again, spending money wisely. So their job is operational excellence and strategic communication to further enhance our strong reputation for operating like an actual efficient business and not a municipality. And this new position has been thoughtfully designed to ensure that San Marcos continues to thrive as a model of modern, responsive municipal government. And, you know, a lot of times when you say municipal government that's run well, people kind of laugh, but we're doing it, we've been doing it, and now we're going to be able to communicate it to our community. So I thank you, Michelle, for bringing this forward and listening to all of the things that we want, really representing our values. And we're excited to see all the things that she's going to do and communicate to our community. And I just could not be more proud of our team and everyone that's here. We have a lot of staff in the back. Everyone works very hard, and we just really want to be able to show our citizens, you, what is important to us and why we do the things that we do and how we can further improve the quality of your life. So anyway, thank you. Thank you, Michelle. All right, with that, this, oh, does anyone else have anything? No? Okay, with that, this meeting's adjourned.